Okay, call this this work session of the Page County Board of Supervisors to order. I noticed all comes present. And we begin with the with the invocation or moment of silence, whatever you would like to introduce.
Yes, Pastor, a full-time pastor, Dwayne Painter, has come to give the invocation for us tonight. He'll stand.
We'll be in the pledge after.
Absolutely.
Let us pray. Your heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for all the beauty that's around this earth that you've created. Lord, I pray for wisdom for everyone here and peace and the passes understanding and that the right decisions be made, decisions best for this county. All these things, I pray in the great name of Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Go ahead.
Let us lead this issue to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, to which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Struth, and thank you, Reverend Painter. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We go right directly to a the the proposed ordinance amendment, planning commission. Mr. Chairman, North.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On a couple of occasions, the board has asked me to look at the procedure by which you could reduce the size of the planning commission. And it's not a simple process. There are a number of legal issues that I have not gotten resolved on such things as, do you have to abolish the whole commission and reestablish it? Or can you terminate all the members at one time? And I don't have any legal authority for it yet. There are a number of ways you can do it. As I discussed last time with you, you could let every every person's term term out and not reappoint anybody. That's would take four years to get that done because the last, the most recent appointee runs out in twenty-four, 2024. Yeah. So it would, the process would go a good while. You could decline to fill seats as you go and just not fill them. The problem with that is, I explained to you last time, some districts will have two and some won't have any, the way they, because Regina had given me a structure of when everybody was appointed and when they would be reappointed. So that's a problem for that that process. You could do short-term appointments, like, for example, if your term came up next year, you appoint him for a three-year term to 2024 and shorten everybody's terms so everybody came to you in 2024. But that's still going to take four years to get there, or three years at least. The last one is what I started with, and that would be to adopt an ordinance amending the whole process, including terminating all the offices. But I have not been able to find any legal authority for that. And in local government's attorneys group, I sent out a request on that, got absolutely no response. And that's the first time it's ever happened to me because you usually get about 10 responses. So it's a question that probably has not been dealt with by anybody else yet. So I don't want to lead you down a path here until I'm sure that I have the legal authority to do it. So I'm working on that. And when we, when we get a program that'll do that, I think we do need to adopt an ordinance after a public hearing on whatever that process is. I know the political ramifications of it because if you shorten somebody's office or you cut them off at the pass, so to speak, you know, they're going to say, well, why me? So that may, that's one of the issues I was trying to weave into the process so it didn't look so harsh, I guess is the word to use. So I'm working on trying to find enough legal support to.
Do you think there's.
I just had a quick question. Why is, did you also talk to VACO attorneys and all of them? They've been through the process and nobody responded?
Not VACO, the LGA attorneys, which are everybody in the state that represent counties and towns. Yeah.
And the second thing of it is, if we wanted to, as far as equity and fairness part, is there anything that precludes us as people come up to go off? Can, since that district would be one short, so to speak, being equally balanced? Could you either then give everyone a half vote and the one that has would end up short be getting that person left only get one full vote?
I'm not sure you can do that because I think everybody's entitled to one vote in each seat. I've found no authority on that. I mean, I haven't specifically looked for it.
I can imagine it's never occurred before.
Yeah, with some kind of commission authority or something within the state of Virginia, you know, VACO, I think, would be the one depressed to say, I think there's got to be an authority, a commission, something that was not getting along, not, not had enough members, had too many members, had something where they, where they abolished it and reappointed. And again, I think you're almost, the only, the only other option then would be the short-term appointees because, you know, heaven forbid, you know, three officers aren't here one night and one says, hey, I want to appoint two people. I mean, as long as they, technically, they have an open seat, they go, so we don't want to create more of a mess, you know what I mean? I don't think you want to leave open seats for three to four years. That's going to, you never know, right? I mean, that's.
Well, that's, that's, those are the collateral issues that you have in each one of these processes. That's why it's so hard to get a legal chain of events so that everything you do meshes legally. Because I don't want to start you down this process when we get to here and make them a state and then you don't have the authority.
I think option A and B, the first two is what we, what would be the only way to fix it, but can you do those and have, do you have precedents where it's happened before?
Don't have it, the precedent. That's, that's my struggle.
I would think, I mean, like, it has to be an authority or commission or something within the state of Virginia, the entire state, that didn't succeed.
Well, none of the lawyers that represent towns and counties and cities have responded to me at all. So I wanted to give your report and.
If we keep it on here until we.
Yeah, just give me some time to try to, try to locate a process, or at least develop a process that I feel comfortable with.
Right. There's also the whole other issue of goodwill that the people have put forward and they have agreed to serve on the commission. And, and we are, we are in effect saying that it seems as though it's getting cumbersome or so that things are, things aren't, you know, things aren't, don't move forward very quickly, whatever, there's maybe too much debate. But what we're saying also is that, you know, we're not saying thank you for your service. We are really saying, you know what? We, we don't, we don't like the way it's working.
Well, I think the process.
At least it comes out, it comes out that way.
Yeah. And I think the process is what you're struggling with, not individual members. It's not like they're not performing or they're doing something malfeasance or in office and being dismissed for that. It's interesting, our code, town, city code, county code is, has a provision in there that you can remove a member for inefficiency. And I don't know what that means.
Well, before we started this process, we had quite a few that were missing meetings.
Well, that.
So that's why I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's what, that's, yes, we've had, we had things that we think take longer than it should have, but the whole thing started because we were not even, they weren't meeting the minimum requirements to have a meeting, right? Core. So, so I know we, I mean, just because we got excited, they got excited, but now we'll wait six months and it goes back to that. So that's, that's where we're at. I mean, it didn't start because we looked into it. It started because we were missing meetings and not having forums. Wasn't anything to do with us at that point.
It also gets to the point that if we were to continue in this format, we need to make sure that every single member is taking the courses necessary to be a planning commissioner. And if they cannot live up to that obligation, then maybe some of those will step off. But, I mean, it's the point. I mean, if you're going to serve on that commission, I understand about, you know, how they're taking their time and that's important, but you also have to have the training or have somebody there.
That comes under the incompetent, where they said the training.
Well, that could be inefficient.
Inefficient if you refuse to take the training. I mean, it changes, so much changes with codes every year that I think we definitely don't want, I mean, just, just a few years ago, when we had the stormwater thing, it was brand new. You refuse to get updated on some of these things. We can't do stuff by ten-year-old codes. So I think we're at, we're at that point.
And you, those kind of regulations, DEQ, all of those are happening constantly. Every time a legislature meets, it'll change.
And I think that's why they said if, if so many would go every year, you always got a few grouped in the group that says, hey, wait a minute, we better, we got to call in the experts or whatever.
The code, Virginia requires you to have staggered terms.
Right.
But I'm trying to un-stagger to try to get the change.
I understand.
That's the problem I'm having.
I understand, I understand. But we, yeah, I just, I think the citizens ought to know we didn't do this.
So when can we expect an answer?
As soon as I feel comfortable enough to give you a witness that I think probably two months to you. No, not two years. I'd say 60 days.
Let's just put it, let's put it on 30 days out. Let's put a revisit at 30 days in the meeting.
Yeah, I could give you a report. Might even have it.
Might even have it. But let's shoot for that because it.
Let's check.
Yeah, let's shoot for that.
So, so if we are, we are looking for a planning commission with just five members, and how long would it take to reach that by attrition?
Four years.
Four years. We won't even have to.
Well, that might be a way, that might be a way to do it, in a way that is dignified and so that we reappoint only when.
Well, you'd have to be short terms. You'd have to be short terms to keep it fair, unfortunately. And I think we don't necessarily need a policy in place to do it.
I don't know that that violates the requirement in the code that staggered terms.
It's a lot, it's a lot of moving parts.
What happens is when you start doing that, you move away from staggered terms and you all come to you at one time. So.
What would happen if you went to the, to the entire group and asked, do any volunteers want to join?
We got a joint meeting coming up, do we not?
You know, someone might, you might be somewhere on the wall line and then lay down a table, ask them.
Sure, here's what we got.
And then the rest of it, attrition. I really mean that. I mean, four years, four years goes by in a flash.
You know, because I think our request for this change is logical and logical and reasonable.
And if there were, if there were, if, let's say attrition, it worked out that there were two members from, from, from one district and none from a, from a district. How often is there, is there some business that where somebody would truly lose out because these two would, and then you'd always appoint one person?
You just don't have the representation. I'll give you back to Alan's comment, can you split the vote? And I'm, I'm not sure I can answer that now. I know I can't answer that right now, but.
I don't think it would be fair to the citizens if you never have one person per, you know, if you quit and you start that.
Well, the district would still be represented with a vote, but the problem is, instead of adding two people there, you'd have all the districts, for example, getting a half vote for each person. And then if the district only has one person and they get a full vote, make sure the district is fully covered.
Did you have a list of, I know you provided us the list of terms. Did you have on their certifications as well or they keep up with the training?
I think right now there's only one that has it.
Yeah, that's something that's.
That's, that's the key thing of the meeting. I think that's the key point of the meeting.
There's some, there's a few that have taken part of it and then didn't finish it.
Where do they have to go to tag these courses?
It depends. Like, the past few years, it's been, here's a, who's been one choice, and then there's usually one or two around.
Of all 10, of all 10, there's only one?
I'm, I'm as positive.
And you know that, who's that one? Do you know the one?
A district one, New York, Kathy.
The person we just appointed two months ago, and everybody else has been there the entire time.
Keith Lee Fleet and Jonathan Comer both have taken portions of it.
Well, that's.
Is there a cost?
Yes, there's a cost. The county pays for that, as long as you do everything for a time.
There is a cost.
Yeah, it's a weekly, on course.
Right. Was it every day?
I think it is every day.
Wow.
It's only like three days.
I think three or four days.
Once every two years, right?
Yeah, once every two years.
Every two years. Well.
And then, you know, there's updates.
But that's got to be, that's got to be part of, I mean, that's got to be part of the conversation when you appoint somebody and you, you ask for them services, can you do this course? And if they said, no, I'd love to do it, but I'm never going to take away from work for three days, well, maybe we've been appointing people that shouldn't be.
Possibly now.
And then you hadn't had too many.
In this training.
I'm just wanting to take it stark.
It has been, but that's what.
That's for 10, that's for 10. 10 puts it.
It may end up in a.
Sure, where you can take it at your leisure and have X amount of time to do it.
Yeah, you could do that, but that's one of the reasons to reduce it because you're having trouble right now filling those slots with people that can do exactly what you want them to do.
Sure.
So that's a prime reason to reduce it from 10 to 5, because you reduce the number of people you have to get on the.
I think I agree with you. I think we laid it out in the, in the joint meeting and you may have a report and says, you know what, I'm never going to take the course, I'm not going.
Yeah, I think you need to address the reason we're looking for change. So it's understood.
I agree.
And I think we, I, on the same subject, really, I believe that we need to keep talking about possibly a plan. The issue of planning is so, is so.
When you got more than one, it's hard.
Right. But that's what doesn't work.
I'll, I'll give you an update in the next board meeting and hopefully have something to follow.
And Amy, can we check and see if that training is available now online?
Sure.
Sure we can. Kind of popped nice to missing three days' work in a.
Right, that, that, that was my question too. If it'd be online, that would be a plus.
It hasn't been in the past, but it may potentially be now.
I'm sure that's in the psych classes.
All righty. Move forward. Approval of property purchase.
Oh, yes. This is actually just a resolution to formalize the approval for the purchase of the Buick property that we've been looking at and have been in negotiations with, and we have a closing date tentatively set now, Tuesday. And this is for the 221 acres that's adjacent to Battle Creek landfill for purchase price of $660,000.
The reason I'm formalizing that, I'm sure Amy, the chair has assigned the deed for the purchase property like this, so I want to be sure that it's formalized from the standpoint, you signed from the standpoint of purchasing, I signed as a leader for the county.
You've got all the titles worked out now at this point?
Oh, yeah, finally, it was about 300 pages.
Wow. Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I move this Page County Board of Supervisors adopted resolution as presented in front of us to purchase the real estate on Battle Creek and move forward with permission of the chairman and our legal counsel to close the settlement.
Motion by Mr. Guzy.
Second. County administrator and for the purchase price of $660,000.
Second. The motion by Mr. Guzy and a second by Mr. Struth. Any comment, discussion on this? I think it is an absolutely forward-thinking move on the part of the board.
Absolutely.
And pay off in so many different ways, the least of which is perhaps the landfill.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the things that probably some of the public will question why we would want to buy that land, and I think it might help if they understood that it'll provide us a fill area, a fill area that the last time it cost us a million dollars to find and move that dirt into a fill area. This time we'll have our own and we'll save the cost of this plus the next time we have to do a sale. So I guess that's one of many aspects that's.
Right. And I think we're like, on our last check, we're like 68 years left on, you know, our landfill, which just could, you know, Jeff had different numbers based on different sales and all that. I mean, the length of the, the property, the future, you know, jail, there's a lot, there's a lot, so many opportunities to our citizens, but one of them is an immediate payback on just being able to put the dirt somewhere.
Which point today? Can we do gates and put out that thing?
Yes, we can.
Yes, you can.
The gates, chairman, we'll send them down.
We had a conversation about that today.
Yeah. So they, they're over the hunting club this morning, put those gates up.
I'm sure Jeff can put some big boulders.
The way I understood it, at least to the hunting club.
Yeah.
That's right. Club had the gates up, I think.
That's correct.
And they take them down.
I'm sure Jeff can put some big bears.
Big bears.
They need to be put.
Absolutely, absolutely. We got, we got to sign. Well, we got.
Yes.
I'm saying, we had to put the proper signage up and everything else, too.
We're writing out the signs. Jeff was right in putting up the other day, I was like, whoa.
Yeah.
Can't do it yet.
Can we find somebody to put the gates up?
We can do it.
I don't know. I'd make it stop.
Not to mention the immediate income from the law that's on that property.
Absolutely.
It's pretty healthy tempo.
I understand if you put it, like, we get crewed and see what's up.
Right. And we need to, and then the next step would be getting a forester, you know, part, you know, obviously, you want somebody there to monitor, measure it and all that stuff. So Virginia Tech offers that as a, as a percentage, well-spent, well-spent, count the trucks and everything.
All righty, we're going to move forward to the review of the broadband.
Let's move.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologies.
Dr. Phoenix.
Yes.
Mr. Guzy.
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach.
Yes.
Mr. Struth.
Yes.
Mr. Pauls.
Yeah.
Mr. Bond.
Yeah.
The two of you.
Very good. We move now to the review of the broadband tolls, R and connect.
It's later. I'm there.
Can I tell them Frank, Frank, this team with R and connect, how are you?
Yes, fine.
They all have a printout of your proposal, just so you know. I knew you weren't going to be able to see the screen, so they all have the printout in front of them.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. And I would just like to say thank you for inviting us to the board meeting. Want to say hello to all the board members. I'd like to begin by quickly explaining at a high level the technology and then the methodology, if I could have a few moments. So this really is, you're not going to find this within the document, but I just want to give a quick little explanation. So the, the technology that we're, or the spectrum position that we're looking to deploy within the county is a federal spectrum position that was held by the U.S. Navy in a number of years, many, many decades. And they used this spectrum position to communicate while ships are coming in port. And so for many, many years, this, this spectrum position was held and maintained by the federal government, in particular, the U.S. Navy. Recently, the government decided to release this spectrum position for use by municipalities, private citizens, individual businesses. And the spectrum position fits roughly the 3.5 spectrum position. I mention that because it's an interesting position in that it's in between some many key terror positions, but the, the bottom line is it's a, it's a large position of spectrum. And why that's important is it's certainly not endless, but it provides a huge orbital for, for any type of wireless service that is run on this network. Now, what's interesting about what we're proposing is that if you look at your county, your county is certainly interesting terrain, but it's also what we would call a, a sort of spread out area where it doesn't make a lot of sense to run fiber to every single home, it just would be cost prohibitive. What we're able to do with this network is to essentially find fiber locations, bring fiber to specific node points, and then broadcast this technology over a large sections of land, essentially bringing the broadband to the home or to the business via wireless access. Okay? So any questions so far about, about the, the spectrum position or the technology? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Well, if you're, if you're asking, excuse me, excuse me, sir, if you're asking us if we have questions about it, what is the very, very, what are the specifics of this technology that you would explain to us if we don't know what it means? In a nutshell.
Sure. But, so I'll, I'll get into that for a moment. I was just, I was, my intent was a high-level discussion about the generalized spectrum position. The technology that we're actually using to bring that spectrum position to the county is a relatively old, which is a, but it's a relatively common technology called LTE or long-term evolution. The long-term evolution platform has been in production in the U.S. for a number of years, maybe even decades. It's the preferred method of transport for wireless technology and is being used by companies like Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, U.S. cellular, to name a few. And so the, the actual physical technology is referred to as LTE, but in this case, it's private LTE because we're broadcasting at a private spectrum position for the county. Okay? So let's, let's go ahead and start with the, we can essentially jump to page three, if that's, oh, two, page three, two page. We're calling phase one, so calling it get started, I believe it equates to the sixth page, not the fifth page, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Correct. So if you look at this page, it's essentially the pricing page, but I want to explain the pricing portions and then of course, what you're getting is sort of a phase one approach to the, the, the technology. So what we're doing here in phase one is we're essentially building a wireless network, and that wireless network is going to broadcast at that 3.5 spectrum position at three specific tower points that we're going to build within the county. And those towers will propagate 3.5 spectrum position of private LTE to the home, to the residence. Okay? So essentially, the, the end user will then have a device, or their device could either be a CPRS device or a common CPRS, or it can be a modem which can, which converts that LTE back into Wi-Fi. So today, if you look at your computer, your cell phone, or any, any other device you may have in the home, most of them run over 802.11 or Wi-Fi. So we would take this highly encrypted network, which we're broadcasting from those three points, and then at the home point, at the router point, would then convert to a common technology within the residence. So the, the router would see the private LTE and would then broadcast in the home at 802.11 or Wi-Fi. And then you would have your broadband. What we would also do is we would establish all the proper servers and subscriptions on the backend so that all the traffic would reside or would, would, would be brought to a certain specific location. In this case, I believe we selected Springfield Elementary as part of the phase one trial because that is where we believe the best backhaul would be available for performance. What we did in first phase is instead of assuming fiber, we're, we're treating the phase one as a point-to-point solution, being we're applying point-to-point architecture from the site location. If fiber is available, we'll leverage fiber. Within this package proposal, we're including up to 500 routers for use by either students or whoever you designate.
And what, and what you'd said when you went over this with Ms. Mueller and she shared it with us is that if you get into specifics and you're able to get fiber from Chantel or there's other fiber along 340, that only speeds or helps the entire process?
Correct. I mean, it would. So what we're showing now is phase one. So we believe phase one is what we would, we would, we sometimes would call a, a validation phase, right? Where we would begin to build a network. And the immediate result is you're going to, you're going to know the immediate results of this network once we begin to propagate. Again, if, if fiber is available, we'll leverage it, but we didn't want fiber to become the obstacle in the phase one if fiber did not exist. So we included this point-to-point. But yes, to answer your question, that is correct.
And I guess if we had fiber to the homes, we wouldn't maybe have in this discussion. I mean, based on what you looked at, we're a county that has few options, or what, you could tell us more about that?
Sure, absolutely. So, so in a, in a location like yours or a county, fiber to the home is difficult and very costly, right? To bring fiber from one location to another and cost substantial amount of money. This essentially acts as that last fiber line. So, so think of this network as, as bringing fiber to the home without the need for a physical fiber, meaning we're, we're going to broadcast wirelessly anyplace that we have fiber. So I'll give you an example. Let's, let's move to, if we can, just for right now, let's go beyond the, the mounting. And let's go to what I'm calling, it's on page nine, and it's called Network Completion Summary, because this will give us a better understanding of where we're starting and Because this will give us a better understanding of where we're starting and then the progression. So in this scenario, we're going to build upon the existing or what we have in place. And we're essentially going to build out a total of 13 towers throughout the county. And the towers are going to serve as what we're going to call macro coverage. I mean, we're hoping to take out the most amount of land and home locations with the 13 towers. Okay? Now, those 13 towers ultimately will have fiber. We're going to explain that in this plan. But essentially, those 13 towers will blanket the county, most of the county, where we can get coverage to where we get towers. And what our secondary plan of attack would be to then essentially have those 13 towers tested through and then begin to deploy what we call small cells. So we would then take additional 100 small cells. And these small cells are not like towers, so a little bit different. We also do as part of this final phase is we include the ability for this network to become neutral host or multi-operator. Now, that's important. We create an environment where it's not our connectivity managing as an ISP, but we can essentially create an ISP, someone mentioned Chantel, or there were, there are other companies in the area, even Comcast. We could leverage Comcast using the transport that was built to support some of their customers in the area. And they would essentially become the ISP in the building arm. The same way that we could then create a separate ISP for just the school system. So the school system could have their own specific routers and access for their students, if that's how they would like to create it. So you could have a scenario where a student is unable to afford or has access to a network within their home. This would essentially become a replicated direct pipeline back to the school. And the school could restrict that traffic as they so wish. So that the student would only see and be able to use things that are available in the school or through the school gateway and not beyond. It could also be leveraged in the future by local police and fire. It can be used by other companies that are looking into two-way radio or other types of transport. So essentially, what we would be building is a massive network that the county could later leverage for additional revenues through a private public partnership.
Question?
Any questions so far?
Can you use any existing towers that's here now?
Yes.
Like cellphone towers and stuff like that?
Yes. Not only can we, we would prefer to. So the way I would view this is anything we're able to uncover in our due diligence phase, any asset, town building, county building, that is of certain height, any location or tower that's existing would only allow us to, we would be able to expedite the deployment and do it at a lower cost. Right? So we would be able to say, well, we were planning on building these X amount of towers. We don't have to build those towers anymore. And now we can put more into network.
Some of the last towers that we did, didn't we hold, reserve the right of a certain level on that tower, certain access point?
I don't think we reserved a level.
What did we do?
Well, public safety gets to the top.
Top.
Yes, our radio system would be on whatever.
So we get top, from top of the down.
Okay.
To answer your question at a different level, we would be, as part of phase one, phase one would ultimately be our engineers on the ground scouting out, doing some site acquisition and looking for areas of interest, the areas that we could leverage. So if we're able to find locations, if we're able to coexist on a tower, if we're able to leverage existing assets, it's just going to allow us to rapidly deploy and go further with existing dollars. So I'll give you a scenario. In my scenario in phase one, we have us building three towers. Okay, well, there's a cost to build a tower. If we're able to find two locations, we may be able to go to four to five towers in phase one. Right? Because we don't have to build a structure. So we'll be able to go further with those dollars. And so it's to our, it's to everyone's best interest to leverage assets where they're available. And that would be part of our engineering due diligence.
How long do you expect phase one to take, to complete?
Interesting question. And I want to say I don't know how to answer that question other than tell you what I have in sort of in my mind in terms of vision. We want to get on the ground as soon as reasonably possible to begin the effort as far as the deployment of the network. I mean, that could begin literally as soon as we're able to find assets that allow us to begin propagation. So this is a proven technology. We know how to deploy it. And for us, it's just a matter of setting up the proper servers, making sure the architecture is completely enabled, finding fiber, if we can't do it, go point-to-point. And then of course, finding a propagation point that is reasonable, right? So what we don't want to do with a tower location is try to broadcast after, let's say, a telephone call height. We want to go much higher up because that's going to give us the best ability to cover the maximum amount of square footage in the area. So we would try to find areas like that in the beginning. And once we begin, once we land that first tower, really the trial begins, at that point, we'll go live with network. So you'll see the results of that quickly. And then as we bring on towers, we'll just further the coverage down the valley and into the county.
So best-case scenario, you could have a home online using the service in how many days from boots on the streets?
It's a tricky variable for that.
I understand. I mean, if acquisition was fast, your-
If a tower is-
If a tower was there, your deployment was there, what could you do?
So I would say that assuming we're, we would probably need a minimum of 30 days on the ground doing our due diligence. And then another two or three weeks to properly configure and set up all the servers. Then of course, lead time to equipment. So I would say an absolute best-case scenario from the time at which we say go, you're looking at anywhere between two and three months before we have usable network.
I think that puts us a little bit, I think a lot of people were worried.
It can go, it can go much, I mean, we have set up, just, I don't want to underestimate our ability. But we've set up a number of trial programs that have gone in weeks, not in months. But part of our due diligence is to look out for the overall architecture of what this is going to look like long-term. So we can certainly get an early win. For example, if we find a tower, and if that tower isn't an ideal location, we want to take that tower, we want to get it going. So to answer your question, we'll move it as fast as we reasonably can to get all the assets put in place. But the 30 days to really map out what this is going to look like long-term is to everyone the benefit.
What is the cost to the end user in terms of subscription or in terms of equipment that they have to purchase?
So if we go back to phase one, so let's go to, let's go back to page five. And I'll explain what it looks like in this scenario, which is a very near-term scenario and I think one that's probably best for everyone to study. So in this scenario, we provide, as discussed, three towers, all of the assets to build a network. So assume we're able to build what we're calling a RAN network, meaning we'll, radio access network. The towers are built and it's fully functioning, okay? Once the servers are built and it's fully functioning, we're going to be plugged into the backhaul of the school. So at that point, the 500 routers will be included. It'll essentially be the amount of users divided by that roughly $76,000 a year of reoccurring costs and all the subscription.
So $12.66 a month per router roughly? I mean, is that what you would get?
I'm sorry, I missed that, I missed that part.
That's $75,000 divided by 500 roughly, not what we would sell it for, but the cost to operate minimum would be $12.66 per router, is that correct?
In this scenario, you-
That's not, yeah, come on. Hard cost, not necessarily support and those, I mean, obviously, there's, you know, there's other things when you run a service. This is our private utility.
But my question is, what does, what does the average homeowner pay? On their service?
About eight per three.
A month.
More than my first house I ever was.
Yes.
That's really up to you. And I don't want to, I don't want to be too critical about, I don't want to lay out like that. It really comes down to there's a cost associated with it and then there's a price. The cost is laid out based on the amount of yearly recurring cost. And then there are other costs associated with the system, like I don't know, there's the backhaul, for example, in the school. I know it's there. But really, that would be up to the county at that point to determine what that individual user would be paying. So if you'd like to make it 50 or 40 or whatever you're comfortable with, that would be the price set point. But the cost is what I can control. So ultimately, it's really up to the county to figure out what they want to charge a per subscriber.
All right. Does, does the user have to buy a server or anything else? As factors for part of that, for your routers?
In our, in most scenarios, we provide, we actually provide the end user with a router and we will, and that's, so the router that sits out in the field will have to be, will have a SIM card in it, no different than your, if you're walking around with an iPhone or Samsung device, smartphones. If you open that device, it carries with it a SIM card. And that SIM card is registered to Verizon or AT&amp;T, here's for major carriers network. In this case, that router would be flashed to this private network. So in order for any device to work, you, the end user, you, the county with, or somebody who is facilitating it would need to know exactly who is on it. And that would be how we would do the proper billing. So in this scenario, we're including 500 routers because we thought that would be a good starting point for this specific phase one plan.
You mentioned on phase one, page five, that three tower locations with one service node and three service antennas, each serving up to 500 routers. So you're talking 1,500 routers in phase one?
No, that, the intent of that document, or the intent of that language was to specify, from a, from a county standpoint, the routers are 500. That's what we're providing as part of the trial. And we can bump that up. So we can say, okay, look, instead of 500, we can go further. But it really just comes down to a function of how many homes can we get with those three locations and how far can we go. So when we talk about a node, we're talking about the actual location. The antennas represent the directions by which we're propagating that signal. So if you, if you look at, so if you look up at a tower, looking straight up and down, there would be three antennas and even specific locations to provide maximum spread of the signal.
So if there was 550 houses under that umbrella, the system would, with additional 50 routers, it would handle the 550 extra? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
So are you saying though that we get 500 routers and who's paying the 1.6 million?
The 1.6 million would be the county.
The county's footing that bill upfront. We're getting, we're getting 500 routers out of that with Springfield being the turnkey or the prime location. And we have to go from there then to Javon Hala and elsewhere.
We're building a private network that no other company wants to come to.
And I understand that. But then who is going to be charging the customer? How are we going to handle this going forward? And is the county going to be responsible for-
Service.
Recurring charges every year in addition to the person receiving the service?
Yeah. And based on what my deduction is from, this is what will establish the cost to the end user.
We're setting up a new bill that nobody else wants to do.
I know, I should do it.
Yeah, you're looking at that figure, the $12 million and reoccurring annual fee is what has to be amortized in the structure, the billing structure. So you can basically run a county-owned, county-maintained service to the end user. And that will be a direct derivative of the service and that cost.
Right.
Whether it's $69, whether it's $89. But that's, you know, and you got to look at, you know, after a certain period of time, what other type of reoccurring costs that you'll have to maintain the equipment.
Well, not only that, but we're also, we also have the issue with Comcast, Chantel, CenturyLink and the others, how they're all going to fit into this.
Yeah, because they could be a competitor.
They could jump on it, but who, if we're the ones putting the bill and putting the bills out to the customer, how is this all going to tie together?
So they negotiate, they negotiate that because that's what you would hope is they would come to us and say, hey, now you have a network that we refuse to ever build. We want to get on your network, how do we do that? Because it's a private network. It's not your cell phone that when everybody comes here from the vacation that your cell coverage goes down. This is a private network that stays at this level. So you have the ability to sell that. Now Frankie, can you talk a little bit more about that technology?
Yeah, so let me, so when we get, so when we put the neutral host phase in what we're calling network completion, but we can, we can fast-forward that much sooner in the program. But essentially, when we go to neutral host, so please think of this network as, to what was discussed earlier, it's a private network. It's a network that's built, it's built by the county. But the goal of this network ultimately is to build a network where it's not currently financially feasible by others because of, you know, restrictions or, you know, regardless of the reason. We're building a network now. As we build out this network, when we go to a neutral host scenario, Comcast, Chantel, a name the company can essentially become their own ISP. They can then leverage this asset, this network, and essentially become a broadband service provider. And think of it this way, you're essentially opening up competition for broadband across the county because now you put forth a foundation and asset by which they can transport broadband across the county. So if you look at it from that perspective, you're building the foundation on which they will build a house. But it's part of the investment that goes into, goes into building a broadband network.
This is why you-
So if you fast-forward this six months in a year from now, and Chantel says, that's great, we love the network, it looks fantastic. We want to, we want to be an ISP. What does this cover today? They can essentially take over that billing requirement. Comcast can come in and also decide to become a broadband provider as well as a school. And essentially, you would have competition across the board leveraging an asset that the county has invested.
This is why you go to North Dakota and they only have AT&amp;T towers and your Sprint cellphone works is because they sold a portion of it to broadband. Once you have the infrastructure, everybody wants it. Comcast don't want to come here and build an infrastructure because it's 2,000 homes, 3,000 homes. But once you have the infrastructure, everybody wants to get on it and provide the service. Verizon, Vias, you know, everything else.
But that brings up a question. When you allow them to come home, who sets the rate for their accessibility?
You're the utility. You negotiate and say, okay, I want X million, I want you to build two new towers, I want you to upgrade the system, you're going to pay X amount a month. You're, when you own the network, you're the king. So you're going to be able to divvy out proportions of it. Generally, when you build one of these in a stadium, like let's say Mercedes-Benz Stadium, you know, Verizon will come in and say, I'm going to build a DAS deployment and it's going to cost X. Now, can T-Mobile pay a fourth? Can Sprint pay a fourth? Is AT&amp;T? Somebody says, I don't want to be on it, then, you know, obviously, but they're not going to, when they get there, they're not going to work. I mean, you know, if you, you're not going to, you're going to have internet in our county unless you want to jump on this system.
Can I ask a question? Do you have some satisfied customers and a track record that we can learn about?
We can certainly have a conversation. I mean, this technology is on the cutting edge. You know what I mean, on the cutting edge? I mean, that most of the protocols that were decided in this program were literally decided in 2019 and 2020. So this is, prior to this type of technology existing, what we're discussing here would be virtually impossible. So we're not going to be able to find you, you know, say 10,000 users or 10,000 different customers that have this solution. I can tell you that we're building out, or we're designing out city-sized systems across the country for this type of solution because it's on the cutting edge. There is really no other way to replicate what we're doing here in any other form and any other time.
Are you also doing one in Virginia?
We, well, in Virginia, it is a venue. We are working in Virginia right now with a major raceway to not only build a cellular component, but also a private component like this. Correct.
And all service solutions are done by us. We've become the company here, right? And if somebody has a question or a problem with their service they're paying for, we have to answer that. We're not, we're not a middleman.
We're providing what's called level-two support. I mean, we're supporting the network and we're supporting actual piece of network.
So roughly?
We did.
What percentage of the calls you can handle? So if you, you know, people call in and say, I need to reboot this, it's not working. Is there a large percentage of the calls that you actually would be able to take without having to deploy a technician?
Yeah, so we design, so we, so in this price- Yeah, so we, we did not, so we, so in this process, we did not come up with a, a price plan for an end user support mechanism. We came up with a network support mechanism. We can work on what that looks like. Now, as we open it up to a neutral host and we provide access to Chantel or to a Comcast, they would assume that responsibility would be of end user support. And that would be completely on them because it would be their subscriber at that point. Because again, we're, this network was built on a neutral host. So that would mean that we would be able to host almost anybody who wanted to become an ISP. So in theory, you could create an ISP called Page County School System ISP. And at that point, if, if, if a student was having an issue with a router, it would be similar to if they were having an issue with their computer. Now, it's, it's very rare that you're going to have an, an issue with, with routers compared to computers, but I don't want to, I don't want to go too far ahead. But, but that would be, we would provide a full layer two support. We can work on what the whole book like for those routers. It's just not something we had tried.
You wouldn't, technically, when you build a utility like this, you would, if you had the call center and you had the 500 hours and they worked, and somebody called in and says, hey, I need to get rebooted or something like that, and you go another time. Sometimes I bent my antenna. That's where you would dispatch, like you have a contract with, let's say, a formed network. And you dispatch them, but you know, at, at a certain rate, and they would go and then they'd address it. And yes, if the antennas, you'd have to build a customer for that service call. That's kind of what you'd have to contract that.
How does, how does a county recoup 12.7 million on a completion summary?
Yep, so let, let me get into how that can be done. So first, I want to let you know that that 12.7, that $12 million, that assumes up to $3 million in fiber improvement to the county. So, you know, for, for this particular solution, we would, we would, we would deploy and, and our fiber we need for our network, but we would probably do 144 count, uh, small. So, so you would have all excess fiber. So you could sell excess fiber, that's one way. You could also, again, charge the, you could charge Comcast to, for the right to be an ISP on the network. That would bring in revenue. You could, this could become our first responder radio. You could, you could use, do so many things with a network. One of the things that you could do, and it's probably not something we talked about, but a lot of, a lot of jurisdictions throughout the US do what's called meter reads. So an example of that would be, the power company in my area does all their meter reads over the wireless network. And a lot of the, a lot of the power companies essentially deploy their own networks. In this case, you could work out a deal with whichever power company was in the area to buy stock from the network and essentially power it so that any time that they were trying to read a meter, they would be on your network and you could charge them per month per user.
So last, last Wednesday, we were on the call with Shandale Valley Electric. And he said, you know, at the end of the call there, they were pretty blunt and says, we have no intentions of bringing network or internet to anybody's homes because they're going to be tasked with federal guidelines for security and everything else to build this fiber ring. So if we already have the fiber ring in place, then obviously they could rent, when you run a fiber cable, 144 strands, you don't use a small portion of those 144 strands. So they're sellable to somebody else. If for some reason they wanted to come in and build the ring, that they have to anyway, then we can lease out a few of the fibers to do our ring. There's, there's multiple opportunities. You know, and we really wished that when they had that call last Wednesday, that they would have said, hey, we're ready to jump into business and do internet. But that first thing out of his mouth was, we're excited about Warren, we're excited about Frederick, didn't hear the word Paige, and then he said, we have no intentions of bringing fiber to anybody's home or anything else. Because they don't. They have to build a fiber ring to protect their electrical grid, but they're not going to become a utility. They're not going to provide broadband. But there is an option, hopefully, that they would want to partner with us and use what we did if we did it. That would be cool. That'd be great. That'd be huge.
But the county would still have to establish a utility department and then we're going to have to have software for that too.
Oh, absolutely. We're not talking, no, no other company's coming to Page County to do anything. Right. You're, you're an ISP, you're an internet service provider. No difference than you say, I'm going to pick up trash, I'm going to, I'm going to have water bills. You're actually doing that, now, you're not with the test, right? We have the grant money to do the test, find out if it works, feasible. Somebody else could come in and say, this is a great thing. When we found out there's 51% of the people that have internet in our county, you know, all the maps show 99%. When the schools went out, it was less than 30. You know, people were trying to use their cellphones and say, yeah, I've got internet. No, it doesn't work. So it's, when you have it, that's a big difference. Then you come commodity where you could sell. We don't have it. We know we don't have it. The schools, the schools are even going to have to go back, I mean, the schools are not, right now, with route learning and everything else, it's not working. It's bad. So that's where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's very, very little you can do right now with, you know, as fiber infrastructure shows today, it, it, you know, there's very little you can do to really bring fiber to everyone's home in this county. I think that if you were to look at that as a, as a, as a way to move forward, that would be a monumental effort. I mean, that would be measured in, in many times the number. In this situation, you know, we are bringing the fiber to the assets that are required. At least 25 miles of that fiber, it, again, there'd be excess fiber available to those point locations. And then you would have a, a, a great wireless broadband network. That would be the asset of the county. And again, that, there is, there is a long-term revenue for, for that, with that. But again, I think someone had said in the room, and I don't know who it was, but it's, you know, broadband is no longer a nice to have. In today's work from home world and today's work from school world, it's become an essential part of a working environment. And this essentially allows the investment to begin building out that, that asset and doing it in such a way that takes it then and of the wireless technology to bridge the gap on some of the areas that are just not reasonable to, to pull fiber to.
So what's the minimum SLA? So as you provide a speed, I know, what can you talk about as far as speed and coverage?
So speed and coverage are going to be interesting. We've gone as far as we can go in the lab. So as far as from a coverage perspective goes. If you look at Page Six, we did a quick little analysis based on what three towers would like for coverage in, in your area. Again, we, we, we wanted to do real-world testing to confirm what that looks like. And again, we can, we can change this up, right? We can, we can apply one of these three towers to areas of true need in the beginning. As far as speed goes, speed is going to be a function of whatever asset we can bring to that tower and the amount of users on the network at any one given time. So, so, you know, if, if we're able to bring fiber to that asset, the performance will be improved in a point-to-point situation. I mean, you're, you're going to be, you know, I think we ran one calculation that said, if we had a lot of folks on the network, you'd be looking at, I believe, a 10 neg up, 10, 10 neg down. We're fairly better performance than that if we're able to get fiber to the asset. And as we deploy, we build out with all the tower assets and all the, all the nodes and the fiber pulls to the locations, we're expecting really good performance. But, you know, I, you, to get a number, we would have to go into some of those calculations about at what time of day, how many users, what peak demand, what are we using for backhaul? There's just too many variables for us to give you. What I can tell you is it's broadband. And what we can do to improve that broadband, we're going to do, so long as it's reasonable.
So when we're talking 10 up, 10 down, minimum SLA, we're, we're out of the, we're not talking jetpacks. I mean, there's, those have failed in our county. We're not talking about those at all at that point then, correct? We're, we're talking better, different technology.
Right, and I don't, I don't want to, so, so no matter what network you're building, whether it's a fiber in the home network, I mean, there's really, there's totally, there are totally variables in that minimum SLA, especially when we're building it from the ground up. It, 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 it's, what, what I can tell you is, from the time the first tower is built within the process, within that first Phase One, you're going to have a true understanding of what the potential is for this network. And again, it would just, that would depend on fiber availability to the asset we're propagating from and, and a few other factors. But you're going to know quickly as we go through this program where, where we are and if this, if this truly is the network that you needed to do.
So I have a question. If, if we were to do Phase One and provide, you know, utility service to our, our citizens and to see if it worked, to see what level it would be, to see the interest, to see the whole feasibility that nobody, everybody's refused to do. We're not locked into a long 10-year deal where we, this is going to be something we have to do forever. We're not, we're not, we're not talking this is, this is something that we're entering into. Can you tell me about that?
Um, yeah, sure. There's different ways you calculate that. So if, so long as the, the asset we're using on the tower does not require a long-term commitment, then I, I don't, I don't know where else we would have those levels of commitment. I can certainly verify what we priced in, but I believe we looked at it, we looked at it as a five, we priced it as a five year, but I believe we're looking at it from a year-to-year perspective. I'll confirm that.
So worst case would be the space on the, on the tower for five, up to five years, but not, I mean, obviously, the routers and everything else will be owned. So it's not like they're reoccurring or anything else. There's not, there's not an additional, other than 75,000 for the routers.
From the county's network, it'll be your asset. So all the nodes will place them. Everything will be your asset. There are licenses and license fees, but I'll confirm how that works if it's a year or multi-year. I want to say they're on a yearly basis, so I'll confirm that in email.
If the routers and the other items that were in Phase One are our assets, we decide not to go forward, what is that, what does that equate, equate into? What can we do with them? Sell them off to Comcast or, I mean, how, what's, how do we recoup anything of that 1.6 million that we put in?
Yeah, I, I, I'll tell you, I've been, you know, I've been doing this for a long time. We're coming on 20 years of, of building networks. I've never been in that situation, so I don't know how to answer that question. I mean, you know, I, I, I just don't know. Now, what we can probably work on is some sort of a phase approach to Phase One. I don't want this to become, I, I don't want us to, you know, but the only way to really prove this out at the start is what I'm trying to say, is without saying it in the first, the first place. But we don't necessarily have to roll out 500 routers on Day One, right? That's not how we intend to roll this. I want you to think of this network like a rolling ballgame, okay? We're going to buy assets as needed for certain segments of this network, okay? So we're going to start with Tower One. Tower One will be designated. You know, at, at some point, Tower One is not meeting requirements. I mean, we're not, we're not going to buy 500 routers for Tower One. We're going to buy an amount of router, amount of routers that would be reasonable to expect from propagation to that one tower. So we're not going to just on Day One say, here's all your equipment and then, and then go home. We're going to really phase this in. So we're going to say, here's, here's Tower One. We believe we've got a, you know, good line of sight and we've got great propagation in this trailer park and these homes and this neighborhood and, and we believe we can get great coverage here. And then we'll be able to deploy in those areas. And you can do forecasting and we'll, we'll get the amount of routers that are needed for that specific situation. My hope is that as Phase One progresses, we're going to need all the routers. We may, may even need more, but that would just mean that we were successful and that the network's performing as it should.
Frank, if we go back to network completion at the $12 million, what percentage of the homes in the county do we provide that service to for that amount of money? And, and what's the time, what's the timeframe?
Again, keep in mind that within that $12 million is an awful lot of fiber we're bringing to these node placements and south of the towers. So, you know, my hope is that by the time we get into this, further down the line, and if Chantel is building fiber that we can hop onto and maximize that, we never truly do get to $12 million, right? So I, I think, I think what is, what is reasonable for me to do is to give you an expectation of what we think it's going to take, but we may not ever need that amount of money. So I, I don't want that to become the obstacle. But having said that, it's, it's too difficult in a lab for us to, to tell you exactly how many homes that we're going to end up. Because computers are great, we love them, and we have the best propagation mapping tools that exist on the planet. But until we get into a real-world situation, it's, it's, you know, it's almost like Mike Tyson said years ago, you know, everyone has a plan until they get hit. Well, you know, we may get hit. We may find that we can't get high enough in some area or, or we can get certainly way higher than we thought in other areas and we may get further. But until we, until we start our surveys on the ground in Phase One, we're not going to know how far we can take this network. It's our hope that during the Phase One due diligence process, we're able to uncover all the locations needed, how far the propagation will go. So we're actually going to bring real nodes out and we're going to do a real propagation testing with real engineers telling us how far away and why and where we're able to impact. So Phase One is going to help answer an awful lot of questions even before we get to discussing what the network completion would be like.
But you did put in 3,000 users or subscribers just as a point, right? As far as the, the value. 3,000?
We did, yeah, we, we did because it was difficult for us to, to figure out and tell exactly, you know, at what point do you cut it off, right? Because I want you to think of everything in here like a lever. We may not need 13 towers, we may need 11. But we may decide to go with 120 small cells instead of 100 because we may find that because of the way the geography is laid out, that towers don't become as useful in the valleys, right? So we, we may, we may, well, I shouldn't say we may, we will be making adjustments to this. But there'll be reasonable adjustments based on reasonable engineering expectations. So the, the 3,000 registered subscribers, those are the amount of devices that we see in the field of routers. Keep in mind that devices are now coming out that actually will directly log into this type of technology. So Apple, Samsung, all these different devices, they're all going to be able to see that 3.5 in the future and maybe only need a registered device. So they may not even need these routers. The routers are there because they're backwards compatible with almost everything in the home. But over the next five years, almost every device being built will have that 3.5 spectrum position built in. And you may not need all the routers. Keep in mind too, that we're talking about one-inch router and that router could have six people in that home. So it's not 3,000 new users, it's, it's 3,000 local homes or locations.
If it's a private network, you'd still sell it by ISP. So it wouldn't be like somebody could just hop on because they have the new technology, they still have to have the subscription out.
Frank, are you aware where broadband is in the county at present?
We, we've been given some indication as to, as to where it is and is not. And what we feel at this point is that we definitely need a lot more due diligence and, and coordination with the county about where all the assets are and where they're not. But that is going to take an engineering effort on the ground for us to really road map that out and figure out, you know, where. So, so I guess what we're looking to say is, at some point, we're in the term in that, you know, there's already fiber to the home in five neighborhoods on the east. This is fictitious. But we may not want to make that part of Phase One or Phase Two, or maybe it just gets further out. So we would focus on areas of need first. I think we definitely need a little bit more time together and on the ground to identify areas of need. And that's how I envision us building the network. We've built it from area of need through to the end where areas, where they just may need competition and not need.
Why would you spend the money in downtown Luray if you already have the service? You would spend it more on the county and save some money and save assets.
And that's sort of, that's sort of my, my concern is that, is that all the clients that are listed here do not sound like Page County. The, the clients that this company has served and, and I think to make.
Keep in mind, yeah, keep in mind that, again, we talked about this technology, it's a wireless technology and this technology is on the cutting edge. But as our, our heritage is in the cellular space and in, in the in-building cellular space, we also do a lot of outbuilding cellular. So that is our heritage. And so when you look at these customers here, some of them are using broadband LTE as we discussed, but they're, they're based on our existing heritage of clients we've had for the last 16 years who rely on us for mission-critical wireless services. And that's their purpose in this, in this presentation.
Good, thank you.
One other thing. For you to do your initial surveys and engineering studies, what level of money are you looking for that? I mean, it's certainly not 1.6 million.
No, so, so we, we think that most of our due diligence, or at least a good portion of our due diligence will take place within Phase One. When I mean a good portion of it. Phase One for us is at 1.6. it. Phase One for us is that 1.68 number, and that will, you know, get started on the three towers, but it also has money allocated towards the due diligence, driving around, figuring out where we can place nodes, where we can place towers, what we think the logical mapping plan will be. So Phase One is probably the most critical to us, in that we will know success or failure, or at least it's worth it for the county to move beyond Phase One within Phase One. So we can look at the final phase, we can look at it and talk about it in theory, but to date, we are still in theory. When we get engineers on the ground, we're going to go a heck of a lot more. What I can tell you is there's going to be a budget in the planning for the three towers, and the due diligence, and the routers, and all those things we talked about, but we really hope that we leave, or we hope we get started in Phase One as we work through it and tune the network. We're going to have so much information about what we think it's going to be, and if we think we can be successful. And look, if we can't be successful beyond Phase One to your liking, this is not something we're going to continue to pursue for the $12 million. We want to be a good partner. It's who we are in the marketplace. We've always been a good partner, but we need this to be a working, functioning network that you're proud of as much as we're proud of. So, you know, at this point, I'm not prepared to really go beyond, you know, as much as it would be in my business interest or my company's business interest. It's not reasonable to expect us to ask for more than what's in Phase One, but Phase One seems to be the right amount of budget for us to accomplish all of our due diligence, to figure out if this makes sense long-term.
I don't know if it makes sense, but you could pull out the hardware, but I mean, he's kind of doing it hand-in-hand, you know. He's wanting to test the hardware to show you, to prove the thing, but if you wanted to pull out hardware, I mean, then all you're going to have is engineering labs and hopes and dreams, so it's not... I mean, you can, right?
Another thing I'd consider is, what are the other options?
Well, we've done it. So I, we know Chantel built a backbone, how many years ago, for how many millions, and we have nobody, no home on it. We were on the call last Wednesday with Shenandoah Valley Electric, and they were blunt, and said, unfortunately, very blunt, and said, "We have no intentions of ever bringing it to your house." I called, you know, Comcast, and they said $18,000 to bring it to my house. I live... And then we got the school, Eric Benson and them bought a bunch of the jetpacks, and they said, they threw their hands up there, and they said, "That was a waste of money." It didn't work.
Oh, it didn't work?
It did not work. And Eric Benson said, "Please tell them in the meeting tonight." The school went ahead and bought the jetpacks, hoping that they could provide them to, you know, schools, and it did not work.
So when you said jetpack, like the little...
Yeah, the little tiny thing you go to the Sprint store and buy, because the upload speed, so, you know, if a student finally gets a form filled out and everything else, and he wants to upload it on, not a private network, but on this network, and it doesn't work, well, so... And if we could take a million dollars, we could buy 50 of those and hand them out, but, I mean, they're worthless.
I think this board needs to make a reminder that we need to move forward on this program, but there needs to be a lot of in-depth discussion on how we structure it, and how we manage it, and what type of structure we want to have that's affordable to the end consumer in the county to then get the ROI back on the total investment. That's what comes down to them.
And unfortunately, it does require, hopefully, you know, Shenandoah Valley Electric would not have to build their fiber ring at that point, so it becomes an asset we can sell to them. Hopefully, Chantel would say, "Hey, it beats up our..."
And I think the gentleman said earlier, you know, about a private, the public partnership does exist, and this type of business, my only concern moving forward is, is we really have, the technology is unknown, and if the technology changes, how do you realign yourself with that, moving forward with the substantial investment, you know, of this? I mean, here's the deal, we don't have anything now, and we're so far behind the real world, you know, we need to catch up and get ahead, and the only way you can do that is with a major investment in technology, and I really feel that we've got the potential to do a great thing here for the county in construction that way.
I believe this also will require some personnel.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why you can't put that number divided by 500 and say it's a big loss.
To me, it's an economic issue.
In the same way that we have G S person, which 10 years ago, we didn't, we didn't have a venture, and when you have a good one like we have, it pays dividends.
Right. This becomes where Jeff says, "Okay, I have a landfill, but now I can recycle and make money." This becomes where, okay, now we can make money with it. How do we make money with it, right? And that's where you got to look at it. It's not...
You just got to take ownership.
Oh, you got to take ownership and say, "No, no other company's going to come to our county and do it. They've all told us that. Now, do we put this forward for our citizens, and we do it?" And yes, technology's going to change, right? Every 18 months, technology gets twice as fast and twice as small, but 10 years from now, we still don't have it because we're worried about technology. That's not going to, technology's not going to slow down, right?
I don't think it needs 18 years. It's going to change. We've got a plan for it.
Luckily, you're not getting antiquated. You don't want to get into something that's antiquated technology, right? Because then you're, we did that with the radio system. It seemed like at one point we did write some band-aids. And this is something that we could also call Harris with immediately and say, "Hey, could we partner on some of the pieces with that?"
That was my question, too. What is the life expectancy of this equipment and stuff? Do we have to allow enough in the billing to replace this equipment?
Sure.
Every 100,000 months. Frank, could you tell us about the life expectancy of this technology?
Sure. So from a, so there are several ways to view life expectancy. Are we talking about technology curve, or are we talking about how long will that durability last?
Hardware.
Hardware.
For starters, the rest we can count, we can count these things burning up and breaking down, if you can come up with replacements.
So, you know, normally, and I'll get some particulars here. There are programs we can get into where we can work on, in sort of insurance on the equipment. I don't get too granular here, but we still haven't selected an O and J specific to this project, because we're still waiting on some due diligence to come back as to what makes the most sense. So a lot of that can be factored in, so we can certainly work on a blueprint that says, "Hey, look, how long can it be insured for? What type of guarantee?" You know, typically, we have equipment like this, you know, we see equipment that lasts, you know, 10 years, you know, will go on the buy, it could, but keep in mind that a specific node is not going to levy the cost, right? The cost is in getting the assets, and pulling the fiber, and, you know, and getting the antenna in properly, and configuring, and commissioning, signing. So if one of this is in operation, you know, replacing a service node is going to be a relatively smaller charge. It's not, it's not the entirety of the network, if that makes sense.
That's Verizon, you know, builds out nowadays, and they do it, Arupson, Motorola head-in. The head-in's not two years, I mean, it's a long-term head-in, and then the antennas, they don't have this guy replacing his antennas on a daily basis right there. It's a long-term. It's like you said, it would be a, I mean, a home router, you know, you buy those, they're not, that's not the expense. Those, you would have some to send back out to people if something were a bit bad. You have to.
I agree with you. It is essentially an appreciating asset. I mean, it is an asset that is appreciating. I mean, so if the concern is what happens to the equipment long-term, I will certainly, you know, figure out what makes the most sense, and how long we can guarantee it. Now, that, again, we talked about levers within the program, right? So levers, if we find an app that is advantageous, that we can have to build, well, then we spend less money. So we can, we can figure out what it's going to look like long-term, or you, or at least create a maintenance program that makes sense for the county.
That's your ROI, right, Jeff? That's a percentage of your bill is going into futuristic deployments, right, and replacing hardware.
I agree with what Jeff said earlier. I think we need, everybody says we want broadband and, you know, the internet services improve. But I'm, the only thing I'm leary about right now is, first of all, cost, I see with this from the county point of view. Second of all, I don't know if we want to get ourselves into competing with other handlers, being a utility department, having the staff involved, having the, the maintenance is going to be required, the technicians is going to have to be on staff or contracted somewhere. I just think there needs to be a lot more discussion on this. I feel as we're moving ahead, we've got a definite commitment to it, but we need to think about how this is all going to play out, because I don't know who's going to be running around trying to negotiate with Comcast and the rest of it. They want to come onboard with sections they want to take, how they're going to split up the territory, all this stuff that goes on.
This is the kind of company you'd hire to do, that's what they do. They negotiate with us.
Well, that's fine, but I mean, there is one time and another charge is associated with that. Of course, we've got to figure out what our payback's going to be and how we're going to get it back, because I don't think the, you know, the citizens in this county are going to be ready to order roughly 3,000 registered subscribers, which is about a third of the households in this county, to be paying $12 million without figuring out how this is all going to come together, so.
Exactly. I mean, you're absolutely right on the points. The point, I think, is, thank goodness, you could do it with a grant, with a feasibility study. You could find out if it works. We don't do our own county maintenance right now of our networks, right? We outsource that. So you would outsource the service calls, obviously, and just like we do now. No part of our county, we have a IT staff. So you would have that, you'd have the call center, obviously, to handle the tier one, tier two, and then you'd have a contract, somebody to go out. With the feasibility study, you go out, you do a section. If, Jeff, it's R, you put it all on an Excel spreadsheet after that, right? You get 550 users, they're willing to pay $88 a month, and is the $88 a month make sense to go right across the county, because nobody else is willing to do it.
You've got to look at what you're trying to, you know, build in for the total investment, and how long, how long is it real?
Right. And so many soft costs, right? Like if you have people working from home, does our property values go up? Does more people move here to this? You know, if you call a realtor to our area, and you're leaving Loudon County right now because of, let's just say because of COVID, right? If you're leaving Loudon County, you're selling your half a million dollar, $800,000 townhouse, and you want to move to the country, what's the first thing you're going to ask a realtor? You got broadband? Can I work from home? Nope, you better go to Woodstock. Well, what do you think the next call is?
Woodstock.
Woodstock, right. So, I mean, are we planning on for the future? That's what we don't have. I mean, and you could have the school system, you could have, Gonzales, you could have Mr. Benson come in and tell us the bleak, right now, future of our school system with no broadband. Either way, it's not pleasant to talk about.
And we've had broadband, we've had the base to do broadband for a long, for a long time.
Nothing's happened, nothing's happened. When we did the Obama-Chantel, we thought we would have broadband. Go ahead, sorry, Frank.
Hello, what I was saying, you know, if this were two years ago, and you had asked me to solve this problem, I would have just kindly said, "No, thank you." This technology and this position, spectrum position, has enabled us to be able to offer these types of services and solutions, and we're doing it across the country. This is what is, this is becoming the front line of private networks, and school network, and school network beyond the school. This is what, this is what is being installed. What I can tell you is, and I hear some apprehension in the room, but the one thing I can tell you is, look, the seat amount, we're okay with either breaking that into seed phases, so that we incrementally build this even within Phase One, right? So we don't fully commit, we're not, I think, going back to earlier, we're not going to buy a great tower's worth of equipment. We're not going to buy all 500 routers. We're going to treat this in a phase of progress that's reasonable, and that allows the county to achieve the goal of providing broadband. And what we're going to do quickly, we're not going to, and this is not going to drag out for a long period of time, we're going to go very quickly how far we get and what the results are. My hope is that ultimately, we get into Phase One, we build a tower, we build a backend support, you all get to test it, we get to test it in home, we get to, you know, we get to really explore what this means to the county, even before we complete Phase One. And if for some reason, it's not to your liking, or not meeting your expectation, we put a stop to it at a reasonable point. You know, this is not, again, this is not about, you know, trying to capture all 12 or all 1.6. That's not what it's about. It's about can we prove, and can we, can we design, and can we build a system that the county would be proud of, that we'll be proud of, and that'll truly impact your revenue. And if we're unable to achieve those goals, we put a full stop to it.
Oh, plug.
That's well said, and I think we need to leave it there.
What's our, what's our next step?
We need a proposal, we need a bit of a study, a proposal for where and how much.
Well, that's this, just Phase One.
That's this.
Well, he's talking also about phasing that in.
Right, but I think this could be the maximum.
That's, yeah, that's the maximum. You would appoint a county administrator, no different than we did with the 911, to say, "This is the path you go down," and then report back to us monthly as the first tower goes up. How many did it serve? What are we able to charge?
Some piece of, right, some piece of this that builds into this.
Right. We would not, we would not, let's not revisit this in six months and get an update. This would be a weekly, monthly, right?
Yeah, well, and we also have to spend it before.
Absolutely, you have to spend it before, you have to spend it before December 31st to get it, too.
Do we need a motion tonight, or?
To further, to spend the grant, you do. It goes a while.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that motion.
Go ahead, we'll work it.
And we've been forward with this program, and expedite.
In a measured approach, as we've heard here with the folks listening in, that we can take it a bit, not we don't need 500 right to start, and so.
Second.
We have a motion of Mr. Vaughn, and a second of Mr. Strube. Is there further discussion?
Okay, here and now.
Mr. Guzzi?
This is a point that I'm going to abstain from a vote, because I currently work in this industry, and it does impact, and I don't want anybody to come to think that because I work in this industry that I'm abstaining from it. Not because of the county definitely needs things, but you understand.
Mr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Mr. Strube?
Yes.
Bishop Holtz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dr. Feigman?
Yes.
And measure. Part of this motion is that we take it in steps within the step.
I think that's where you need to put, unfortunately, that's more burdened, that the county administrator has to get back to us with those steps.
And I'll be honest with you, the reason I've been here, what options do we have? Nobody else wants to come.
Well, we've heard no from some places that should be saying, "We got the polls."
You know, we've talked at this board so many times about economic development. You don't know how.
This is the first thing we have, this hurts us more than anything else that we can do. It's not the I-81, it's not the mountains, this is what hurts, because I'm a daily business.
Is he still on there?
I think so.
Frank, you still with us?
I am. I'm sorry, I've been, I've not been on the call, I apologize.
No, 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 we just wanted to make sure you're still with us, and let us know.
I have one last question. What, how many personnel do we need to implement Phase One?
You know, it's beyond. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I was cross-talking. You said, "How many personnel do you need for Phase One?"
Yeah, I mean...
County personnel.
And those type of, those type of services. Now, when we complete Phase One, we're going to have to work on some sort of protocol. Should, you know, should someone have an issue with logging into the router or things like that, we can work through those logistics. But if it turns into this becoming in the beginning a sort of a school subsidy program, or a program where we're deploying it as a, we're calling it a soft role for the school system, then I would, I would, I would say that whoever is currently working within the school system to help the students with whatever IT issue would probably be suitable, but we can certainly work on what that looks like. I just, I sort of see Phase One as a proving ground, and, you know, I don't know what the work we'll be doing to help in the beginning.
Frank, we originally called you, Frank, we originally called you because of the schools, and that was our number-one concern, and it still is a huge concern, but economic development has taken because, after talking to the administration of the school, we can't provide it for all 3,000 students, so therefore, we can't provide the service. So we're going to provide it to our citizens, and then the school will have the ability to benefit from it, obviously. So it would be the same people that we work with as a county versus the same people at the school. It would be county-driven right now. And that's just to you.
But as far as the utility payment, I mean, if we're going to be the...
Yes, it would go to us, not the schools.
So we're going to have to have somebody that's going to do that.
Yeah, you're going to be a caretaker of it. It's minimal, I mean, you know, that, but call center help, if he contracts employee to go out to onsite, that's what he's saying. You're not going to need a full-fledged fleet trucks and everything else day one.
Right.
You're saying, yes, billing for 500 people. Obviously, that's not a, that is, you know, but that's a recurring thing, when you set it up in the system.
Yeah, you can't say that.
And Frank, I would like to say this, too.
You don't know when someone will call.
Absolutely, but hopefully, we need it for a whole ballot.
If we go with this in a system... If, if we go with this and it systems, it works and we get it set up right and everything, and you negotiate with Comcast or Sprint or whoever would like to take and buy into this system, before I vote for it, they're going to pay dear for it, because they wouldn't come to start with.
They're not here to see it.
Right.
Let's move forward.
Keep in mind that as it goes to, as it goes into the, the final phases and we begin to build a neutral host, you're not going to have to, you're not going to have to, um, to really try hard to get Comcast to want to get access to more billable customers, right? So, so Comcast will, will, they're going to want access to the customers because that's how they make their revenue. So ultimately, uh, you know, you're, once you, once you hand out those customers, that ISP, they would take over the following of the ISP. So to your, to your, uh, point. And I think it doesn't have to be an environment where they just want, it's essentially a neutral host. You could have, you could have this entire network built out and have three ISPs competing for business. Uh, and, and then whichever ISP they were on at the time, that's who they would ultimately be able to use for their cut and they would handle all, all the technical issues.
As well as the building.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Anything further, um, may I have any? Thank you very, very much for attending this evening, sir.
Well, thank you very much, and I, I look forward to being your own person. Hopefully, when our engineers at the ground will be able to spend a little time together, we appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very, very much. I, I appreciate it. Okay, we move forward now, so if you have a care's funding for broadband?
Yes, well, not just broadband, but, um, what we have left. So, we went over the sheet before, but I wanted, I kind of wanted to give you an update on where we were. We had the 1.9, almost, uh, almost $2 million left, and so I assumed or had a, um, good inclination that this might be coming off. So if we remove that, um, last time you approved the digital deeds for the, um, circuit court, to repair the water line for the well at Page County High School, and then the compactor wheels for the landfill, which have made a huge difference, um, that, that was money well spent. That left us with 154,414.34.
Should we put the 75,945 yearly reoccurring, um, maintenance cost in there as well for this network? Or just to use that out of, I mean, we know that that's going to be part of it as well, that 75,000 should we?
Well, I don't know, you might want to hear the other thing first, especially if we're going to be, um, charging maybe more.
Yeah, you're charging, you're getting that money back and you can pay it like so.
But the, uh, DSS, they have had to spend quite a bit of money on PPE cleaning products. They had to put intercom system in for, um, in a security door, and that cost them 12,604.71 cents, which they are requesting reimbursement, um, for that PPE. For their, uh, one, if they have home calls that they have to go to, I mean, they had to get full PPE for staff to go out to some of these homes. The sheriff's office, they had these requests over here in the past. They had the jail vehicle, um, number one, that they had to take inmates to, um, medical appointments. The van that they had that we talked about last time that had several hundred thousand miles on it. The transmission recently went out. It's over $5,000 to repair that. It's on a vehicle that's probably worth $3,000, so it's not worth doing. Um, I, I think we really should replace that vehicle.
The van is the jail vehicle, 4,000, 145?
Yes.
Okay.
They also requested a Polycom video system, uh, for the, to see the magistrate. All of that is, um, done by video right now. Right now, it's one system, so that is tying up deputies for several hours at a time sometimes. So it would be very, um, worth the money to spend to, uh, get a, an additional system.
Seems like, seems like the van and the Polycom system is, is desperately needed.
It is, and so.
But Polycom system can, can they use two at one time? Or do we have one already?
Yes, there is one currently, um, I'm not, I can't.
Yes, yes.
Yes, that's what I thought. So this would be an additional one. Um, let's see.
So you have 154,000 is what you're telling us?
Yes.
Could you add over the, the, the van and the, and the, and see what that takes, what would that number, that takes it down?
Uh, that takes it down then to 92,274.33.
And we don't have to make it, there's no other, I mean, there's no pressing stuff tonight other than, if we took the jail vehicle over and approved the Polycom and the, and the cleaning supply?
Right, there was that, and then the part-time, um, for the sheriff's office, I think they're realizing this year, um, due to some of the COVID things and, um, some of the new demands on the jail, that they need the additional part-time.
Anytime you do an employee, though, out of a one-time grant, that impacts us for years to come, though. That's the only thing I have to, I mean, we may need to vote on whether or not that.
Well, hopefully, this is one-time costs that are going to be increased due to some of these.
I'm saying, is it a short-term position, though? That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's just for part-time, additional part-time where they could use part-time.
So can we ask about that, though? Is, uh, sure, you mind?
Sure. What's up, Mr. Guzzi?
So 35,000, it wouldn't be, it's to get you through this, obviously, COVID and everything else, we're not, this is not approving a, a position that's going to be lost.
No, no, sir, this is not for position. This is for part-time employees that we, we have to bring in with the COVID, drug interdiction, different things like that we didn't.
Okay, we'd understand as if that, when this budget, that would roll off, that's not a reoccurring.
Yes, sir, I understand, it's not a reoccurring.
Okay, I, I made sure it wasn't a position, because, you know, that does, you don't want to have to, okay. So what would that take us down to?
So then that would take you now to 57,274.33.
Which we've still got a few months to kind of figure things out with that, right?
You do, you do. And, uh, in the letter that I gave you, that the sheriff gave us, um, I think in addition to the jail vehicle, they also had another vehicle patrol that went down, I will tell you, um, we ordered vehicles last year. We're still waiting on one of those to come in from last year that was ordered at the beginning of the year. And so the vehicles that have been ordered in the current year, we haven't received those yet either.
So we probably want to wait and see how that impacts us once we get all those.
Well, unless they go buy one off the lot, so that might be, I mean.
And how many, how many vehicles, how many vehicles are due for replacement?
Well, we have four that, that we already have planned for, so then that one.
We ordered four.
We have four replaced and plus four in order?
No, four that are on order to be replaced, but.
But we replaced some too, to your part, right?
We did, three, three that actually came in.
So we have seven total.
In the past two years, and then we replaced this jail vehicle.
I'm just speaking to the opportunity to purchase something now that is.
Right.
Zero dollars.
Right, exactly.
But we don't know what we're going to be hit with over the next three months. It's nice to kind of make that decision as, you know, but. So you need a motion to move forward with those items, though, right?
Well, you don't, I still have to, you all consensus.
I think the consensus is the DSS, the, the Polycom system, the van and the part-time is kind of, we're up against a wall, right?
Yeah, so I mean, that's going to leave you with 57,274.
And I think we can still address that at additional meetings.
And the P, the BCS HS well at the 28th, 28th century? That is, that is to fit, that is to complete that well?
Yes, because they.
Absolutely, because I noticed there's another, another leak out there in front of the building.
I did hear there's going to be a Morgan Phoenix sign at that well. We're going to have a little ceremony, and Mark's going to bring the sound system, and we're going to have people singing, right? Perfect. So we've done that, it'll be a dedicated well.
I was on the school board for the first, the first four years of, of not doing anything.
Well, that, being the principle, I think we need to have a dedication for that well. Mark is good at that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I'll vote for that, so.
You need a motion? Out of town.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Somebody need it.
Just a consensus?
Just a consensus, but are, so are you going to leave the 57?
I would leave the 50.
To hold right now, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, because we don't know what the next three months are.
Chad, that covers what y'all need.
Our, uh, we are grateful for anything that y'all can do. Um, you know, I mean, we had some other requests there. Uh, we have a vehicle one patrol that's going down as well, and one of our investigative vehicles is going down. It's in very poor condition, so we need a vehicle there, but like I said, anything y'all can do, we appreciate.
I, I think we all want to, but what if something were happening with our EMS and our, the next three months were in some weird time, right?
Yes, well, if, maybe later on in the year, it's not spent, we can look at.
We've got to spend it, right? We have to spend it. So I think that's all. Forced, and then, so let's see how we get those and.
That's the question I got. Why, why, why is it so hard to get these new vehicles in?
I, I know something with the chargers last year.
Can we switch those? If you're waiting on those, is there a way to switch those at this point, or?
I think they're already on order. It's just like, what was the deal with them?
I'm sorry?
The chargers that we ordered that weren't even here from last year, what was all up on those?
Um, they, to my understanding, the, the factory had shut down for COVID. I know that, I know that we had, there was two, two Durangos that were on lots that we had checked on today. Um, they.
Is there a way to cancel one of those that are on order? If we were to do an immediate purchase, I mean, that's kind of.
There, there's not out there to purchase.
Okay, well.
That's the, that's, that's the problem. Everybody's getting this care's money and went out and, and purchasing these vehicles. So there were two, I guess, at the last meeting, we had came to, to Amity, and they've been sold. So if we get the order in, they'll probably start building them around January. Um, so.
It's a basketball, a lot, I mean, so we can spend it.
Right, if we can find something.
The van, right, you're going to van, you're going to, I mean, unfortunately, the 40, if we come to December and that 40, you can't find one, we have to spend it or lose it.
Right, right, I understand.
I don't, I just want, not, not against you, but it, it has to be spent.
Right, I understand.
So in, in all your due diligence, if you can find something that we love, I mean, that's, that's the, you know, you have the amount. But, yeah, I think.
I know that one thing that we have requested as well, um, and I, I just want to ask, I know that a lot, there's a lot of other jurisdictions that have compensated their, uh, first responders with hazardous pay. I know that some of the towns are talking about doing that, so if that's something that you, that you all could possibly look at, it would be greatly appreciated by. I know my staff, the county's EMS staff as well, um, is something to look at.
I think, I think that not now is desperate and we're excited to, to be able to do that for you.
Vehicle, the, uh, Polycom and the, uh, part-time. All consensus? Alright, that's my point.
Okay, one other thing related to that, um, since we were talking about broadband. Um, I know that, um, Mr. Guzzi was talking about the, um, little hotspots the school deployed. Just to give you all another option, since right now what we're looking at is the northern end of the county. There was another, um, company that sent us information for, these are giant local hotspots that would serve 15 to 25, um, users at one time for any kind of device you can control, um, so they can't be, you know, they can't pull up there and stream Netflix or something like that. So reaching out to this company, uh, they are very from different price ranges, anywhere from 4,300 to 9,000. And if you, they recommend that they be deployed areas, maybe churches or somewhere that has a parking lot where people could drive closer to stream rather than have to go into town. And if you wanted to try a couple of those, um, in some areas in Shenandoah or Stanley, if we're going to be, um, you know, kind of focusing this effort toward the northern end of the county. I did speak with our IT company that we contract out with just to make sure, because, you know, I'm not an IT expert. And I was really happy when they called back today because they were really excited about these because they have realized that they can build these for us. And that these are something that, you know, we would own, you could deploy them wherever you wanted to. You could even have a schedule, maybe where on Tuesday and Friday they're here, and on, you know, Wednesday and Thursday, they're somewhere else. It's also something that we would own, and I know that we're putting in a new radio system for, um, EMS and our first responders and law enforcement. But there are still a few areas that coverage is going to be a challenge. I mean, it's not going to be 100% coverage. So with these, if they were on a search and rescue somewhere, or even had to go up into the national park, this is something that you can take with you, and then you're going to have.
But it has, but, yes, but it has to point back somewhere, unfortunately.
It does, actually, because also cellular.
I know, but if there's nothing there, I think, I think the best thing for that is to get with, um, Mr. Benson and the IT staff that he brought here to that town, and see if they could point out one or two places. I mean, that amount of money, we could certainly talk about. But if you don't have their buy-in, we don't.
Well, it, it doesn't have to just be for.
No, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, right now, we're in desperate need, and our school systems are, are in a mess. If they have a certain area that they, I'd like to hear their response.
Well, I've got that, actually, I didn't get you to say that. Um, so, and we have the map. I actually had a map from Josh, and this is because of all of the, um, surveys that we got through the school system. But the issue with some of the information from the school that doesn't tell you, it, there might be a lot of homes that are, that say they're not served. But no one asked the question, do you have service that you can get, and you're just not buying it? Because I think that is the, the issue with a lot of those. So what was recommended, and this came from that map, um, and I did speak with Mr. Benson, too, is in the Rileyville area, probably the best place, they, they recommended, um, two of those, which either be in Rileyville Baptist Church, Page County Baptist Church, of course, that's in the other, uh, other end. But we're looking in the south area, Mount Parmel, um, or Stony Run, local home park, because in that place, there were actually, that, that whole park is under, is not served.
My hesitation with wanting it as a, the only hesitation I would have with wanting it as a church is we then are opening up their parking lot.
Of course, we would have to.
I know, I'm just saying, there's a whole lot, there's a whole lot involved before you just, yeah, unfortunately, you have to get it at a tasty, I mean, you know, same. You're, you're creating, you're creating a.
I'm not understanding these discussions we have to have. I'm just throwing out another option.
Speedway, Speedway.
Right, there we go.
Drive.
There's a Speedway.
Do we have, do we have any information on the use of, of hotspots at this point? McDonald's or outside of, or Fairfax?
I haven't asked.
I mean, do we know if there's any demand for this?
I have to go to Dunkin' Donuts and pop in parking lots.
That's my question. I don't have any data on that.
Just say, just say everyone's worried, that, that actually that was a topic on the six o'clock news today, about these parking lots, how they've been utilized. So I think we need to educate ourselves on other jurisdictions, the pros and cons of that before we move forward.
Right, and Shenandoah.
It's not the expense, it's the liability, it's the, you know, like, if you put one of your Speedway down a dead-end road and there's one car left at night, I mean, who's liable for that person?
Well, here's the other thing, is that, uh, Form Network was also going to put cameras on this. And this is the good thing about Form Networks being our, um, contractual, um, company, that they would also monitor these. So they were going to put cameras on them all the way around. Um, it's going to be locked and chained to wherever it is. Everything would be secured inside, um, of like a little mobile trailer, and, um, you know, if, if anything happened like that, it would be alarmed, so.
It's a good thing, there's just a lot of moving parts. So if you would have, who would, who would champion it? Would Form Networks want to champion it for us, or who would champion it for us?
Yeah, that's what they were saying. So they're, they're actually going to give you a proposal.
I think that's what we need to see, I think that's what we're going to see at the next meeting.
But I just wanted to, you know, give you that other option.
We're in bad times right now, anything we need to do.
I, I, I think it's, I think something like that at, at 4,300 dollars or 94,000.
Right, and we're talking about a three-week timeframe.
It's worth doing it, it's worth checking out, seeing what, how it works out.
We can compare.
It might be a company that would even pay us for it to use in their parking lot.
But if we're providing it, we need to lock it down to where it's school, school only, so it's not where you go to watch Netflix.
They can also control it and manage what it should be.
I understand, I understand. But it, it's a lot of moving parts, and I think if Form Networks gave us the proposal, I'd feel a lot more comfortable with not us deploying something. And we've got to be careful where we deploy it, in permission and liabilities and all that.
Exactly, and we, we are aware of that. And they're, uh.
That's good.
I think once I asked them about this, it got their wheels turning, and I would be thrilled to, to partner with a local business, um, give them business.
I think that could be a big part of the, the thing we talked about tonight as well.
I think so, too. But anyway, they're, they didn't have time to put together their full proposal, so I'm just supposed to get that tomorrow.
Wish we had a place for you to park it at.
Me, too. Me, too.
You're not taking yourself on that at all.
Are we finished with that, with the care's funding?
Yes.
Okay, we move forward to a discussion of vision statement. I have my name on this.
US?
I know, I will, I would certainly, uh, point it out as being one, one more person around the table that had, that apparently doesn't have a vision. And, and, you know, and, and so people send me things such as the, uh, the comprehensive plan has a whole chapter on vision. And, and then also they, they remind, people reminded me on the, uh, the, that we have that right on our, our, our page kind of vision statement. We have, we have a statement here, and when I, when I saw that, all I can say is, if we don't do something about this, this is embarrassing, this is embarrassing. Now, the comprehensive plan was not, but, but, but it, our values, these are the values of our, of our county, and I think we need to take this page out of the book immediately. These are our values. Well, there are seven of them, and four of them are not even, they're not nouns. Okay, so they're not a thing, okay? So you have integrity. We, we value integrity. That, that, that's, that's good. We value excellence. Excellence gets a little bit more nebulous, but it's still, yeah, we like things to be excellent rather than not excellent. We value stewardship. I would, if I pass around a piece of paper here and have to write down what that means, what does that really mean for us in terms of governance? That's, that's where we leave it. Those are the only three words there that qualify to be on this list. One of our values is inclusive. I'm not sure what that means, okay? It can be put into a noun form, but that doesn't mean anything, okay? Transparent. What does that mean? Does that mean that I shall not? Does that mean that you don't lie, or we need to be able to see whether you are? It doesn't mean anything. Innovative is not a value, okay? Innovation might be, or transparency might be, and the last one being accountable, accountability is a noun, but accountable is not, and I, I just think that these, these are, these are, and, and the tagline, we need to think, rethink this kind of a page, Page County Where the Living is Good, I mean, I think we're beyond that these days, and I think, I, I really, I think we strive for more than just the living is good, and it's just, that's, you know, we're not selling, we're not selling, selling donuts, that's actually more of a fear, the living is good is, is, it's not even down home issue, I, I, I just, I would just like to, you know, challenge each and every one of us, I have one more year and a more year here in a couple of months if I live that long, and I like to at least have, 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 have had enough discussion that we could redo this page, this is an embarrassment.
The way I, now, you know, obviously that could be a huge task, but it also could be a simple task.
This cost money.
It did, it did, we had, we had a person come and an mediator, and they stood up in front of the room, and they had whiteboards and all that other stuff, and, and again, nobody, but nobody checked it, you know, and I think what it was stewardship and assets and stuff like that is, when we buy stuff for like the landfill, we want to be good stewards of that for our citizens' dollars, and we have been, with now recycling and, and being profitable and making money, we have absolutely been taking care of those assets and being good steward, stewardships of the taxpayer's dollars, but it wasn't spelled out that way.
Yeah.
So the way I, I think with the year, if you wanna get it done in the next year, I think is then unfortunately, it would be staff, is you're gonna direct somebody within staff or ADA or economic development or Liz or somebody like that, you, you have a questionnaire, right, and you provide it to Jeff, and you say, Jeff, what is your three best topics, and you write down your three best, and Larry, what's your three best, and I write down my three best, then you take them and go, hey, there's a consensus here, these, these, these three things, 80% of you said this is what we do, and that's how you rewrite it, because if you have a meeting with a whiteboard again, it could be six hours, you get tired, you start adding verbs, if, if we're, if we're a professor, right, versus nouns, and, so that's kinda how you'd have to get through this.
Yeah, you just start thinking words that you'd really like to see, I mean, creativity, you're just thinking about the kind of stuff that we've been talking about tonight.
Right.
You know, creativity on, on issues that are just deadly, broadband is a deadly issue, it's been, it's been dead for five, 10 years, I mean, it's a lot of nowhere, the well at Page County. But creativity, how do you get it done?
Right.
You know, or, or getting something done?
Why don't we bite, why don't we bite it off in little chunks?
Oh, absolutely.
And we have, we have the, if you, if you, if it's something you as a chairman wanna do, I think we'd all be for it, right? Anything we can do to help our county.
I think you got the edge on this, go ahead, you're right. I wouldn't dare, but no, but, but, but I, I do think, I do challenge you to bring, to bring, words mean a lot, they do, because they stick on paper, okay, and you, and you, this gentleman here knows well that, you know, once you get the words on paper, they're, they're there, and you have to be answer, these words are bad choices, okay?
And they were good intentions, just so I'm clear, I think they were good intentions.
Absolutely.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
Dr. Phoenix, that's why we named you chairman.
No, it's a blue ball, alright.
Dr. Phoenix, the, the last time we were challenged by our awesome and loved Mr. Humphrey, I know I personally went home that night and spent a lot of time and thought, and said our county administrator, what I thought we needed to look like, short-term, midterm and long-term, and some of the challenges and the things that we can change and overcome on a short-term, the midterm, and I will not be here for the midterm or the long-term, but I, I think it's important that we clarify that and come up with a game plan and go to work to, to achieve those things. I, I see some of that happening with the broadband, and, and if, if we were to bring those things to the county, I think we can see some good steady profitable growth here for the county, it makes sense that everybody wouldn't gripe about, and we could, you know, maybe we could have a Cracker Barrel before I die, but I ain't holding my breath, but you need people to do that.
And, and to add to that, you're, you're right on track, at the bottom here, there's strategic initiative one, two, three and four, and they are laid on everywhere in the market, to foster economic well-being, we talked about all, okay? Practice good governance, I mean, I think that that is, that is, that's behind everything that we do, that we hold for, for what we're doing, for sure, strengthen community partnership is fine, and then fund the future, how are we gonna pay for this? How are we gonna pay for this? And I, I think that people are, you know, Jeff Levens knows what that means, I'm sure the gentleman here does know, if, if, this is a, this is still sort of, sort of shaky in terms of are we, is this gonna cost way more than it's gonna give, but if, but you have to take a chance sometimes as well, I think that is, and I, I gotta pay for the future, and we have some ideas, I guess, in mind as well, some, some other things.
And we finally do some of that proactive, it can come back to us, whereas in the past we sat around and says, well, never, we can't spend it down, we can't spend it down, nothing's came back to us.
Well, we have an opportunity here, unfortunately because of, of an unknown virus, our government is utilizing the taxpayer's dollars to help our local communities, and it's our responsibility to spend and license them.
Since you mentioned it, okay, the, the unexpected, the COVID, I think that, and we've been sort of put on, put on notice by a couple of citizens that, you know, that we don't have any strict, strict leadership in, in terms of the county government here about, shall, shall people be wearing these, I just have noticed right now, I came and moved one on, took it off right away, right, yeah, we got them, but, and, and we've seen our, our, our number one, our head guy, okay, who, who, who has practiced in, he and, and his whole crew of people practiced infection.
Our governor at the beach?
No.
Oh, I thought you were talking about our governor at the beach.
The president?
Not our governor.
The president and the rest, and all of them hugging and kissing without the mask on, I mean, they...
Like our governor did citizens at the beach?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're clear on who it is, okay? It's everybody, right?
Especially people without masks on yelling at people sitting next to them.
It's everybody.
You know, it's really, you know, there's plumes, you've seen them, 26, 26-foot plumes, 26.
Yeah.
The 12th year is meaningful, and Clyde Humphries, they've got three, three smart folks here.
Three smart.
Okay, and I, I think that we, that, I think that we could, as a consensus, say that we have to have, I think, more signage on the front door here, because apparently it's, it's there, but apparently people don't really, they don't really follow it.
Change the food line, more, more, more.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta be careful then.
It is, and...
There's some people that have issues because of that, and I'm talking about health issues.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you gotta really filter through.
But it is a HIPAA compliance.
It's resistance, it's a resistance from the community too.
But it's a HIPAA violation.
In a facial cover.
I, I don't think, as our lawyer, I don't think we need six more lawsuits because we're trying to demand people do something that they may or not HIPAA compliant, right?
It's not just that, but I don't, I don't wanna put our first-line staff, which is Nina, who's there in a glass box, to have somebody attack her because she says, hey, you can't come in here with masks on.
Sure, sure.
That's, that's not...
No, I know, it's, I think we can certainly encourage people as best that we can, to the point that we can, before it becomes unreasonable.
Do we have, do we have remasks at the, at the front, where, and I think that might be a good step forward as to where we have?
We can do that, but, but we don't right now.
No, but I think, I think, I think we can offer, I think we can offer that, and it might be something that Nina, that would either hand it, I mean, but you could have